We're recording.
Attic notice for this evening's meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon, was proposed on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise to the floor, ladies and gentlemen.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, use the public park for special event.
I will tell you.
Give me a ring on.
Yeah, no, I'll just tell you in a minute. All right, annually, the Alzheimer's Association has a walk at Gillie Park and utilizes the pavilion as well. They're again looking to request the pavilion, which is available, and the park is available on June 21st. So Mr. Whelan from the Recreation Department has sent it over for our approval and to waive the fee of the $100 for the rental of the park.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Number two, special use permit?
The Goddard School annually has an Easter egg hunt at their location on Lacy Road, 212, 214, and they are again looking to do it on April 13th, because it's a Saturday, and the rain date would be April 14th. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00. They do utilize the parking outside of their location, obviously not in the parking lot. I do believe they use the church for the availability of the additional parking. It has been done in years past, no problems.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Number three, mailbag papers opt out from receiving.
Mr. Dykoff had talked to me about this, you know, the mailbag that comes in the plastic bag that's thrown in front of your driveway, and that a lot of it becomes litter and is, you know, laying around going down the road with the drains from the rain and everything. And there are, you know, there are people who call and opt out. This is the phone number that you can give them to opt out or to opt in. You cannot broadly opt out the whole entire town because newspapers have their First Amendment rights to be able to, you know, get the news out there. But we do share this number with many members of the public. We have put it on our Facebook page in the past and our website. I can do another blast about it. And they are good with if you opt out, not giving this information to your yard.
And the reason I brought this up is back when we had the presentation about the recycling.
Right.
And I know what I was doing. I was taking the paper inside the plastic bag and putting it in my recycling. And guess what? Two things were wrong in that. Plastic bag's not recyclable.
Right.
And even though it's in a plastic bag, it turned into a wet mess, which we know. And, you know, that's why I wanted to publicize this, but then, you know, I don't know how they would do this, but is there any way to package it in the biodegradable bag or, you know, can we reach out to them?
Well, that would be up, you know, we could certainly try to send a letter to them and say.
Yeah, that's all.
Well, if you adopt an ordinance that you can't use plastic bags anymore throughout the town, I guess that's one way to do it, like Stacker's just saying.
No, no, listen, I'm not anti-business, and I know.
I'm just saying.
We're at Coffee Shop.
Listen, I'm not anti-business, and I know that they put advertising on the outside of those plastic bags. So I get it. So it's great.
And a lot of people like it because this is the only way you can get your shop right by or sometimes.
Exactly. So I just want to publicize that if you want to opt out, you know, and if there was some way, you know, they vacant homes, you know, if there was some way that if they went buy a home and there's five or six or eight, and I've seen this, you know, they take it upon themselves to not do it.
Yeah.
Just be a little more cognizant of the litter of our recycling. Just, you know, listen, like I said, I'm not anti-business. I think it's great.
We can get a letter out to them.
Okay, that's all.
Something along those.
All right, well, I'll call them, and I'm going to state the number here so that it is for those that watch it on TV. The number to opt out or opt in if you choose to do so is 1-800-376-6222. So those are for the mailbags that are thrown at the end of your driveway if you wish to no longer receive them. I have no add-ons for this agenda.
No add-ons? All right, we'll move right into township meeting.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
Attic notice for this evening's meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
You're reading this, right?
He's going to read it.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah.
I want to give it to you.
Is that to you?
Uh, number one, proclamation for 3D drinking, driving, and drug event. And we have a member of the Board of Health who is on top of the committee, so I'll hand this to him. And it says, whereas the Ocean County Health Department provides a community health improvement plan model for Ocean County, and whereas the Ocean County Health Department hosts drinking, drugging, and driving, 3D, is always a choice and never an accident annually in the Ocean County Mall, whereas this year's event will be held February 22nd, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and whereas the alcohol and drug treatment agencies, prevention professionals, students, elected officials, and law enforcement personnel partner at the event to create one-stop-shop forum for the public, and whereas the Ocean County Health Department through the chip encourages and supports efforts of DUI prevention, the prevention of alcohol and drug abuse around the country. Now therefore, I, Timothy McDonald, Mayor, Township of Lacy, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, do hereby proclaim that February 2019 is 3D National Drunk Driving, National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month, always a choice and never an accident, call and call upon all our citizens, parents, and businesses, and schools throughout Lacy to encourage safe and responsible driving for the mutual benefit for monitoring public and all pedestrians throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
With the Board of Health buzz.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Do you want to talk about that there, Pete?
It's a.
Can we start it?
It is a fantastic event. The public's invited. It'll be on February 22nd. We hold it each year. Each year I coordinate it. It's completely a political event. Many high schools from around our county are present, and they bring the driving folks in. They bring driver ed teachers, they bring students, juniors, seniors, sophomores. Of course, each year we have a large contingent from Lacy High School. We're really proud of it. It's an opportunity to ask police officers questions before a DUI in the hopes that a DUI or anything detrimental to a young person's future never takes place. So it's a great place to come with or without a parent. It's a great place for educators. It's a great place to learn absolutely for free for vis ed teachers, driver ed teachers, principals, and administrators. Again, February 22nd, 12:00 noon, Ocean County Mall, open to the public, and we hope to see you there. Our commemoration will be, like I said, at 12:00 noon, Center Court. Mayor, thank you for your proclamation.
Our pleasure, our pleasure. Okay, number two, Resolution 2019-71 Appointing a Member to the Veterans Commission.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, appointing a member to the Veterans Commission. We are adding Donald Tenachke out. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-72 Authorizing the Temporary Employment of a Part-Time Recycling Attendant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the employment of Gilberto Sanchez as a temporary part-time recycling attendant for the Township of Lacy. Our current recycling attendant is out on medical leave, and we need a temporary to fill the spot. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-73 Authorizing the Employment of Snow Season Laborers.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the employment of snow season labors for the Department of Public Works. These are the young men from the summer that come back if we need them for snow, and then we do hire two other gentlemen, one that used to work for the MUA and one that used to work for the Township, to run some of our loaders during the snow season as well.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
I know, I know, I know. I agree.
Resolution 2019-74 Authorizing the Hiring of Snow Contractors.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the employment of snow season contractors for the Department of Public Works. These are the additional snow season contractors that we hire to help assist us in plowing the approximate 200 miles of roadway that we're responsible for. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-75 Authorizing the Filing of a Recycling Tonnage Grant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the filing of a municipal recycling tonnage grant application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This is the tonnage grant that we get annually. It's based on 2018 amounts, and we usually see that sometime midsummer.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-76 Authorizing the Execution of the Emergency Management Agency Assistance Grant.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the execution of the Emergency Management Agency Assistance Grant. This is in the amount of $20,375.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-77 Authorizing the Planning Board to Undertake a Study on an Area of Redevelopment.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the Planning Board to Undertake an Investigation of Block 1837.01, Lot 8.06, as a possible area in need of redevelopment for which powers of eminent domain may be exercised pursuant to NJSA 48:12-A-6. This is the parcel west of Ocean First Bank that the Township owns that we need to meet our affordable housing credits with, and this is the next phase in our redevelopment plan. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yeah.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-78 Authorizing the Refund of a Building Department Fee.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacy Township Building Department. This is for someone that is no longer going to continue with placing solar on their house. The total amount we're refunding is $321.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-79 Authorizing the Refund of Deposits.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit sales for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-80 Authorizing the Payment of Township Bills.
Resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $10,345,876.07.
Move it.
Second.
You guys choking over here?
Yeah. It's a lot of money.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
School gets paid, the county gets paid, and you, I'm sorry, you have an abstention on Mr. Gilmore's bills. I forgot to give you the number. Yes, I will get that number. Sorry.
Okay. Monthly reports.
Let me finish writing that reminder here. All right, so monthly reports. Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of January collected receipts in the amount of $23,940.12. Community Development for the month of January collected receipts in the amount of $144,858.75. Road opening permits were collected in the amount of $25,920 for the month of January, recycling commodity in the amount of $742, and truck parking in the amount of $750. Now those are all the reports. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of January 24th, 2019.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of January 24th, 2019.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the membership in the Lenoa Harbor Fire, oh, sorry, motion to approve the membership in the Lenoa Harbor Volunteer Fire Company for Kevin Haller.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle licenses for Lacy Girl Softball, Lacy Township High School Booster Association, the Forkett River Tuna Club, and the Lacy Utes PBOE 2518.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve bingo licenses for Lacy Utes PBOE 2528 and Lacy Utes Charitable Foundation.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I do have some add-on resolutions. First is Resolution Number 82. It's a resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a special traffic enforcement program grant. This is an additional grant that we received last year from the Highway Traffic Safety in the amount of $37,556. I just need authorization to accept.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 83. It's a resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2019 taxes due on a property granted to 100% disabled veterans extension and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on Block 1024.13, Lot 47. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
And the final add-on I have is Resolution 84. It's a resolution to Township of Lacy County, Vol. State, and New Jersey, appointing William Applegate to the position of mechanic for the Township of Lacy. This is not a replacement, this is not a new hire, it's a replacement position. Our former diesel mechanic retired in March of 2018. We had to wait for the civil service process, which just got completed, and we are appointing him off of the list. He starts on Tuesday. Mr. Kennis?
Move it.
Second, Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
That's all I have to add on this evening.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. We recently met with state representatives to go over our plan endorsement for Town Center for what seems like the 100th time, and we patiently await our February 27th workshop meeting with the state that Veronica and myself will be attending in Trenton. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Commander Juliana?
I have no comment.
Okay, Commander Dykoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Commander, Deputy Mayor Kennis and I recently met with the school board, we're liaisons, and we actually await their budget and let us know where their increases will be. They, as we know every year, have to wait for their aid report from the state of New Jersey. Hopefully, it's better than we think it will be. We'll wait and see. It just so happened, and maybe some people out there and here, had noticed that recently many municipalities had gone for school referendums. And just so happens, I know Tom Zerba had gone for one, and they had just voted on it, I think, that day or the day before that we had met with them, and I had asked them if they had planned, you know, at any time in the near future to go for a referendum, and they assured me that they did not. They did have some capital projects that they were looking forward to doing, but they had it within their budget. There were a few items that we felt the township might be able to help them with, with information. One in particular was an anti-intrusion system. And I've asked Administrator Larray to reach out to our chief to see if there might be some homeland security funds to help out with that. So, listen, we want to work together and do the best we can for our children and our schools and, of course, our town. And then the only other thing I have is, although this won't be broadcast tonight, it is Valentine's Day. My wife's already upset that I'm here and not home, but I want to wish everyone here and there Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commander Curatolo?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to open by updating our residents on some of the information that we heard last night regarding the nuclear plant. And so we have a plant manager over there who briefed us last night at Community Hall. Today would mark, I believe, the 133rd day of the decommissioning process. It's been decommissioned piece by piece. There's a primary focus through multiple levels of inspection on safety, environmental safety, employee safety, and financial worthiness. So, without taking too deep of a dive, and anyone can call 693-1100, I'll call them back. I want to inform our residents that not only are we still receiving tax income from that nuclear plant, there will be people working at that nuclear plant. There will be, we have verbals that say that Lacy people will be hired first, and we want those folks to be union folks that are hired first. There is a nuclear decommissioning fund with a billion dollars in it. There's, by some estimates, we were told last night, anywhere from $750 million to $800 million will get the job done. At every level and every question that was asked, we got a quick and confident answer. So, when you talk about regulation, when you talk about the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, talk about the Bureau of Nuclear Security, the insurance, the overlapping security that's over there, I'm as confident as I have ever been in that plan. There are ideas and thoughts being bandied about. I'm not sure if I'm at liberty to talk about it. There's been interest from big business to create a type of cloud storage over there. There's been interest in battery storage for collecting electrical power while now it's on the cheap, storing it, and then selling it later. So there's commercial interest over there. We are well aware, and we think, what I think, I don't speak for everyone, but I think I wouldn't get any kickback from this, there is a taxable value on the spent fuel that's there. And we will be pushing for that in no uncertain terms. Moving forward, we talked about the event at the Ocean County Mall. We're hopeful to see a lot of people out there. It's for public health and public safety. In that regard, I want to commend our police department. There's been not only a couple of break-ins to vehicles, but there's been some white collar issues around, if you've read the police website as well. Those folks that have been victimized through scams, and in particular the seniors that get preyed on, which really ticks me off, there's a couple of things. Some of those folks were made whole. Some of them are active investigations. I've seen Chief Dibella go into our senior communities and present the senior scam program that he has. It's very enlightening. If you think you know a lot about it, you haven't seen a lot until you see it. So I want to commend them on that good work that's going on. In closing, I want to touch very briefly and very lightly on my position on marijuana, which is upon us now. I believe that it will be the law of the land sooner rather than later. There's a lot of discussions, a lot of rumors. Some of those rumors are, it'll be sold at different outlets. Some of those outlets may include vape shops. Some of the discussion is centered around liquor stores. Some of it has been freestanding. The truth is, no one knows, and everybody's a respected member of our business community. Where marijuana loses me because of the public safety and our 12 years of public health, is that I see a different part of what it does to families on the other end. I don't know in what world of public health or public safety that becomes good public policy. I think we work very hard here to keep a strong community. I think we respect and support our Recreation Department, our Municipal Alliance, our Recovery Center. So for me, it's very difficult to swear that. I will be fair. I look at everything. Don't disparage or diminish anyone or anything or any business. That said, I personally don't think it's good public policy. There have been several towns around us and throughout New Jersey that have ordinance against it. When you talk to people in law enforcement, and I have talked to people in law enforcement at higher levels, including Colorado, who came over here and gave a symposium at Ocean County College not too long ago, and a lot of our brass from around the county and other counties attended, they essentially opened by, you don't want to be us. You don't want to look like us. And that was, it went on from there. I've been to Rutgers University. I've seen physicians talk about it. The state spent much, much money years and years ago to have people, help people and assist people and quit smoking, and now they're supporting this. So it's the classic, let's cut off your head to stop a nosebleed. I just don't agree with it, and that's where I stand. I will, I will stand up in opposition to it. And I just, I respect the people at the township, but I want people to know where I am at with it. I wanted to be clear about it. I think we work very hard, and that's where I'm going to be moving forward. So with that, I'll close my comments.
Thank you. Okay. It was, I think all of us were there pretty much for the installation dinner of the underwater rescue team. Again, volunteers making Lacy Township great. They just, they do a great job. Those guys, I mean, think about that. They got to get underneath the water and try to get, rescue people and things like that, and that's awful dangerous. So we take, we tip our hats to them. We, last Friday, we did the ribbon cutting of the new MUA building. Absolutely magnificent building. They did a great job down there. And I would hope everyone just stopped by and take a look at it. They did a good job. I also attended the mayor's winter retreat in Trenton, and that was eye-opening, to say the least. There's a couple of things, and I had forgotten all about this, but the Cadillac tax for employees, employers, on health benefits is still there. They just kicked it down the road a little bit, and to 2021 or 2022, I think it is, what they did with that. And I can tell you this, Senator Sweeney stood up in front of all of us and said, it's coming and we're going to enforce it. So that got me thinking a little bit, and so we did some research on it as of tonight, what the numbers would be, and it would add at least a penny to our taxes, of the Cadillac tax, because every one of our health plans is considered a Cadillac tax. It would be considered Cadillac. We did it, and that's, it's about $400,000. And the thing of it is, is that we have to come up with that money somewhere. We cannot go to the employees and ask them to pay for it. We have to come, it's got to come out of our budget somewhere. So that's, don't know if it's going to happen. Hopefully it doesn't. Hopefully they resolve this issue, but it's right there in front of us, and it's something we're going to have to deal with. The other part of this was something that Community Curatolo talked about was marijuana, and it was held by our JIF, which is our insurance. This is going to be a three-ring circus. There's just no if ands or buts about it. I'm not sure they know what the heck's going on. And these are the guys that are going to have to insure all this stuff, and they were not sure about it. There's a lot of issues on the table, and I was talking to, as I was leaving, I got talking to a guy who was, it was one of the coldest days. I'd get my coat, and I asked him what he thought about it, and he looked at me and he said, listen, he says, think about this for a second. He said, if you're a state, municipal, or county employee, you're subject to urine tests. Every industry that I know of, I know, I just, I had my contract checked when I got back, I'm subject to urine test. My boss can call up and say, go and get a urine test. I flunked that urine test, I'm out. No, there's no second chances. There's no nothing like that. So who are they marketing this stuff to? Think about that. If you really think about it, they're really marketing this stuff to college kids, the kids that people don't have jobs, the least people that should be doing this stuff. That's who they're going to be marketing this stuff to. You know, we just found out tonight that one of our own is going to be getting medical marijuana. So this, I mean, this is an issue. It's going to be, it's going to be tough, and we'll have to go from there. But it's something to think about. The other part of that, and this came from Senator Singer, was, and I almost fell off my chair about this one, was the average, I got to say this the right way, the average family health plan in the state of New Jersey is family health plan in the state of New Jersey is $34,000 for government workers, government, county, state, municipal workers. The average family health plan for the private sector?
That's about right.
That's $22,000. So, where, why can't we get somewhere in between that? That's where they're headed. I firmly believe, based on the conversations that Senator Singer had, that there's wholesale changes coming to all of this, and it's going to be rough. That's it. And that's all I have. So, with that, I will open it up to the public. Does the public have any comment here this evening? Come on down.
Mary Bender, Stark Bay Avenue. Just wanted to let folks know, one week from today, 6:30 PM at Milpon School will be the kickoff event for the Berkeley-Lacey Relay for Life. I brought my little poster along. I don't know if you can see it much on the camera. Wonder if possibly there'd be a place to put it up here. Just wanted to invite everybody at 6:30 at the Milpon School, the kickoff for the 2019 Relay for Life.
What time do you think that will go to? Only because we have a budget meeting that night, and we always wind up having a meeting on kickoff night.
We go usually till about 8 o'clock.
Okay, so we could be out of here.
If we get out of here, we'll stop over, but understand we've got the budget meeting.
Absolutely. Just want to invite everybody and people out in the public. We're looking, just to let you know, this year, combined with the initial relays from Lacey Township, and then when it became Berkeley-Lacey, this year, with all those relays combined, we'll be passing the $1 million.
That's a million-dollar mark. That's fantastic.
So, just wanted to share that with everybody. Thanks very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Jim?
Good evening. Jim, Lieutenant of Lacey Township. I must have read my mark, because I was at my mobile, picking up mailbag flyers all up and down the street today, and I went around, because she's on the lagoon, and making sure to bug her in the docks okay, so I could get looking under newspapers floating down the lagoons, and you have orders now, you might have to have attorney clarify the definition, but your ordinance 219-5 at sequence, just five, six, seven, eight, prohibits anybody from throwing litter from a vehicle.
But the newspapers are exempt from that, though?
Well, no, because if you looked at, if you get a subscription to any of the major newspapers, they'll have a mailbox that they'll give you attached to your mailbox, but the mailbag throws them on, I mean, I have neighbors that have mailbox underneath, newspaper box built in underneath, and they still throw them. And there's a difference between news and...
Advertiser.
Ah, that'd be nice. I was there, right. But if you remember, when the mailbag throwers started back in the 1980s, it was over an inch thick, and it was mailed to every home. They have an option. They can mail them, but they don't want to pay for the mail. So, you're not prohibiting them, but it is definitely litter, because one, as you said, you can't recycle plastic bags, so therefore it's garbage, you forget about the paper inside. But they always manage to throw them in puddles.
Got grayed out.
They're in my driveway, I run over them.
Like I said, it is a nuisance, and I think your litter ordinance, and I forget the ordinance you also have for handing out flyers and bulbs, sticking them on windshield and stuff, the shop and stuff. I definitely know 219-5 talks about litter, and you got to go down to your own definition of litter. Is this litter, or should you add it as litter? Because if you're, first of all, you shouldn't have to opt out, you should opt in. You have nothing but summer homes that are vacant right now, and you go down the street, where I was today, and you'll see three, four, five up against the fences. You should opt in. It's a good person. I mean, we use the shop right flyers and local flyers, but, you know, they used to come in the mail, so. They have, they have the advantage to put out their material.
Like I said, Jim, we're going to craft a letter.
Yeah, hopefully through education, you know, let's try that first, and then, you know.
We get phone calls like on a weekly basis about this.
But how's all the summer homes, they're not opt out of it? They're not here to opt out.
Well, that's why.
They're not even going to see your news. So, it should be an opt-in requirement, and they should have.
We could put it out in our annual tax bill newsletter.
But they should definitely have to put them in boxes. You're not preventing them.
They ran it off in Barnegat Bay when they go down the drains.
Well, they do block up the storm drains, and we do have to clean them up.
Right in front of your house is one of your drains to the lagoon.
My house, right.
So, the other thing about marijuana, I'd probably stay here for six hours talking about it, but I won't, but all the politicians have talked about, well, just think of the tax revenue. First of all, you don't buy your first bag, okay? Now, Colorado, a guy told me, I was talking to him at one of our local restaurants, he paid $35 in tax for a joint in Colorado. Okay, so, you get your tax there, and then you just keep making your own, putting it in there, so if you get stuck, you have a tax there, okay? If you look at California, they have reduced their taxes because the black market was taken on.
That's when the gangs come in.
Because the legal marijuana is so expensive that you just opened up the bigger black market.
Gangs come in and undersell.
And I'm sure if you talk to the people from Colorado, they talk to you about that.
That's exactly.
The population and everything else, and the burglaries and the thefts that are coming there, but like I said, so, if you read the story about Kamara Harris, United States Senator, from California, when she was on a rap show, talking about how, when she was in college, she smoked marijuana.
And she inhaled.
And she inhaled. Like I said, that was a big appeal. The problem is, I don't think she's exited yet. But if you listen to her, she's talking about how she listened to certain, like Snoop Dogg and a couple other rappers, when she was in college, smoking marijuana and inhaling. The only fact is that they weren't even after companies, they haven't heard of them, they didn't produce a record at the time, so I guess it does cloud your memory. But I agree, and I would encourage his town to pass an ordinance prohibiting the sale of marijuana where it's used, just like other municipalities. Everybody has to realize, these are federal laws that states are violating or municipalities are violating. And in the past, we've had attorney generals go into California and seize the shops, seize the revenues, and seize that stuff, so there's always hope. But, you know, like I said, you don't have to worry about where you're going to get your insurance, because they're going to have universal healthcare, right?
I was talking about.
It's only $36 trillion in a decade.
So, I mean, think of it, our insurance, just for us, is going to go for the township.
Again, I mean, the point is, do something about the mailbag. It's a pain in the...
We're going to work on it.
We'll get a letter. Anybody else? Regina?
Regina Descends, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I'm not speaking as a board member, I'm speaking as a public citizen. I have to give my disclaimer, so I don't get in trouble. As I mentioned last meeting, I was going to Washington, and I did go to Washington. I did speak with Andy Kim personally. I have been in contact with his district director. He has already asked to be put on the calendar to come to Lacey. He's going to have to come more than once, because now they're telling me congressmen can only come here for like 30 minutes at a time. I'm like, "What, are you kidding me? I need him here all day." So, I'll let you know as soon as I'm here.
I've already been in touch with them.
They did.
Yes, in fact, the gentleman that works for him also used to work for Adler, so I have a relationship with this gentleman already, so yes, we've already been in touch.
This past week, or?
No, I think the day you probably met with them.
Oh, the 29th of January, yeah, I was right on top of them. I was texting them every minute.
Yeah, because he wasn't in his office. He said he was in the car and coming back from Atlantic City or something, or wherever he was.
Perfect, yeah.
So, we've been in touch, and we're trying to coordinate dates.
Yeah, I got a similar information, okay. And we also, the New Jersey School Board Association Contingency Group also met with Booker and Menendez's aides as well, and we sat with them for an hour about school funding mostly, but we did the best we could with our representatives. Now, Senator Sweeney's office, I've been in contact with him all the last year, as a citizen, and I got a lot of lip service, and I got to tell you, I don't like lip service.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ted Knack, Eland, O'Harbor. I had heard when you were passing some of these resolutions this evening, that somebody abstained from a portion that was regarding the George Gilmore bills, portion of the $10 million we just agreed to.
What it is, is that a member of Mr. Gilmore's firm is a member of the Ocean County Board of Health as a Commissioner, when Mr. Curatolo works for the Ocean County Board of Health, because, and it can be perceived as a conflict, so he needs to abstain from the payment of those bills.
Okay, I was just trying to get a clarification, and going back to the last meeting.
Even, even, sorry, sorry, so even though that the payment of the bills you could consider ministerial, it's out of an abundance caution. That's what, that's why I abstained.
Okay. Going back to the last meeting, there was a discussion about a water line going to Joey Harrison's. Could you, the committee update us on what's going on with that?
There was no discussion. There was just a resolution adopted to rescind the authorization to enter into an agreement. That's it.
There was a new resolution passed, correct?
Yes.
To rescind.
For what? Why was it rescinded?